Order the April 4th meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Treasurer Salas, do you want to lead the way?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
So, I'd like to open today and acknowledge Commissioner Winder could not join us sadly for those of you who may not know her mother passed away earlier this week. And on behalf of the entire county, the Commissioners and our row officers and department heads, I just want to give our heartfelt condolences to her. There will be a service for her mother in Norristown. She allowed me to share this this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at Mount Zion AME. And anyone who would like to send condolences can either send them to the Jackman Funeral Home, or if you want to contact her Executive Administrator, Rea Fernandez, with any questions, we could do that. But we're thinking about her today and, you know, really know how important her mother was to her and her family, and are really picking up and trying to do what we can in the county to keep things moving and give her the time that she needs with her family. So with that, I want to note a couple of things that are happening today. And then this coming month, we're going to hear a few presentations, including one from our District Attorney's Office and Partners on Human Trafficking. Today, we also have an event acknowledging voters who are inducted into the Voter Hall of Fame. And I want to note that we're doing that today because primary, the primary election is upon us and voting actually begins this weekend. We have satellite offices that will be open this weekend. And starting on Saturday, April 6th, we have offices in Lansdale, Narberth, and Norristown where you can vote in person, apply for your mail-in ballot in person, and submit it. The Election Day at the polls is going to be April 23rd. Those of you who were at our last meeting know it's the first day of Passover. So we took a number of steps to expand our accessibility, open satellite offices, and make it easier for those who are observing and not able to vote. We moved about nine polling locations out of synagogues into other places as well due to that date conflict, which was scheduled by the legislature. And I should also note on Sunday, we'll have a satellite office open in Pottstown, Narberth, and Willow Grove. The offices are open from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the next two weekends. Drop boxes will be open 24 hours a day beginning April 13th. And you can get more information on all those locations on our Voter Services website. So I'm also looking forward at 2:00 p.m. As I noted, today, we're going to recognize some Voter Hall of Fame inductees. Those are individuals who had applied and who have voted in 50 consecutive general elections. So they are champions for democracy and at a time where there's a lot of cynicism. They are committed to that, to the process and making sure their voice is heard. I think they set a great example for our community. So we're going to acknowledge a number of folks. And we have a new category. We thought it's also good to acknowledge folks who vote consecutively in primary elections and in municipal elections. And we're calling that our 50 Under 50 group that has voted in 50 consecutive elections, the Titans of Turnout. So those folks will also be acknowledged today at 2:00 p.m. I know some of them are in here. Some of them you'll recognize because the reason they were turning out is because their name was on the ballot for the duration of that time. But so I also want to acknowledge it's National Public Health Week. So this week runs April 1st to April 7th. And the theme is Protecting, Connecting, and Thriving. We are all public health. Public health encompasses so much of what we are responsible for in county government, whether it's preparedness and prevention, including vaccination programs, tobacco and drug programs, making sure that we educate community members on how to create healthy environments in their workplaces, housing, through public safety initiatives, and in neighborhood activities and planning. The Montgomery County Department of Health and the Human Services Office of Public Health truly does incredible work. And we're excited to lift up some of that work this week. And today, we have here our Deputy Administrator of Public Health, Jay Kim, Jay here. And we have David Genova, correct, Director of Health Promotion at Montgomery County. So thankful to have them here. And I just want to say, Jay and Dave, to you and all of your colleagues in the Public Health Department, thank you for your service. It's incredibly important for all of our residents. Thank you. And a couple of other things I just want to add on that. I want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that we have a Community Health Assessment Survey that's still open for responses. So that survey is available in multiple languages at Montgomery County, PA.gov/CHA for Community Health Assessment. And, oh, I have a proclamation to do here. I'm not used to that. So with that, we, the Commissioners of Montgomery County, do you need to stand up to proclaim this? I'm new to this. We proclaim April 1st to 7th as National Public Health Week and urge all Montgomery County residents to observe this week by helping family, friends, communities, schools, and coworkers adopt healthy choices. And we do have a proclamation. It's right here. That's how we're supposed to do this. Okay, so I'm going to invite Jay and Dave to come up, and we're going to acknowledge Public Health Week. So, thanks. Okay, so my final comment, the Planning Commission is inviting people to experience a new self-guided walking tour of the area around Conchalk and Station. It demonstrates the concept, reality of transit-oriented development. It's the idea that residential and commercial development near existing transit links can be designed to increase the use of public transport and alternative modes of transportation. Transit-oriented development expands opportunities to connect people within the county and the greater Philadelphia area. And planning around this transit is important to help our communities become vibrant places. And it also helps us address the issues of climate, the issues of lack of affordable housing, and the need for development there. So it's incredibly important that we have a Planning Commission that prioritizes this. And I want to invite everyone to be a part of that tour. When is that?
It's actually a self-guided tour and available on our website.
Okay, great. So it's available on the website for the Planning Commission. So please check that out. With that, I will turn over to Commissioner Deville.
I'll see if I can outdo you. All right. Another meeting of a full room. Appreciate everyone being here this morning. It's great to see so many community residents interested in what we're doing here at the county. This week is the week of young child. The week of young child starts Saturday, April 6th, and goes through April 12th. This week is dedicated to honoring the importance of early childhood education and incredible efforts of those who work tirelessly to support the growth and development of our youngest learners. During this special week, the Early Learning Resource Centers, 17 qualified coaches, will be working in person with 15 childcare programs in Montgomery County. As Commissioners, we recognize the dedication of early childhood education caregivers, advocates who champion the needs of our young children every day. Your commitment to providing a high-quality early learning experience ensures that every child can thrive and reach their full potential. We also have Child Abuse Protection Month. April's also National Child Abuse Prevention Month. This year's theme is Doing Things Differently, Moving From the Challenge to the Change. It's a sobering reality that children abuse continues to afflict our communities, leaving lasting scars on the most vulnerable among us. But we can refuse to accept the status quo where children are at risk. Instead, we can innovate, collaborate, prioritize the safety of the well-being of our children. Child Abuse Prevention Month serves as a reminder of the responsibility we all share of protecting our most vulnerable members of our society. We urge all residents to join us in this important effort by educating themselves about the signs of child abuse neglect. Speaking up when they suspect abuse, support the organizations that work to prevent child abuse, and creating a safe supportive environment for our children and families. Also, we have PA Homeowners Assistant Fund for county residents who are behind on their mortgage or property taxes. The Pennsylvania Homeowners Assistant Fund application window is now open for 2024. This fund began in 2022 when Pennsylvania was allocated $350 million of federal government funding for mortgage relief after an influx of applications and paused the program reopen for 2024 to allocate the remaining funding. Our county staff at the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau are often in contact with constituents who are going through rough times. Many are vulnerable to losing their homes due to financial issues that lead to late mortgage and property tax payments. Last year, thanks to referrals from the staff of the Tax Claim Bureau, 39 Montgomery County residents were able to avoid tax foreclosure of sale and be able to remain in their homes. The grants totaled $310,000 and ranged from $400 to $14,000. So this year, the Bureau employees will continue to refer county residents for as long as funding is available. The program is prioritizing applicants in danger of losing their homes, their mortgage closures, or tax sale. So the county is encouraging folks who have back taxes from 2022 or earlier to apply. Ultimately, we want to help our constituents get their back taxes paid and get them into a better place financially. Also, residents with questions about the program can visit PAHAF.org or reach out to Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau. Couple other things I wanted to bring up real quick. One is that there was a ruling last week from the Third Circuit Court that was impacting the election of 2023 and counting of undated ballots. Many residents have reached out to us. I will acknowledge them and thank them for reaching out and sharing their opinions or suggestions. Although I personally would love to go back and follow the new law or decision that was put in place as a Board of Commissioners, our hands are tied. So we have to let that go through the court process. But again, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive a lot of comments from people, and we take those seriously. But unfortunately, in this instance, there's not a lot we can do. So also, I know that the staff has been working on scheduling our Commissioner meetings, something that I mentioned or brought up earlier this year about moving our Commissioner meetings around the county. And there's probably 20-plus townships that our staff has been talking with or been reaching out with. And I hope to see a schedule in the near future that we'll be able to have our Commissioner meetings around the county, preferably closer to where I live. No, I'm only kidding. But no, the goal is to get around the county. And actually, I think our second goal, if possible, is to have those meetings at night as well. So we want to continue to encourage everyone to come and attend our Commissioner meetings. And then finally, there's been, I've been getting emails. I'm not sure if anyone else has or getting contacted. But there's this perception or misperception of Montgomery County is a sanctuary county, Montgomery County isn't a sanctuary county. So I'd like to get clarification. Could we get on record what we, you know, is Montgomery County a sanctuary, officially Montgomery County a sanctuary county? Is it or is it not? I think that's, I think people want to know. And I don't have the right answer, other than my understanding and talking with a few people, Montgomery County is not a sanctuary county, although there was some list published at some point in the past that had Montgomery County on that list of sanctuary counties. But I don't believe that's true. So could we get clarification if we don't know today? Could we get clarification in very near future? Or if we do know today, could we clarify that one way or the other?
You want to take a swing at that? No, I'm sorry. I'm looking over at our solicitor. Yep.
Montgomery County has never been declared to be a sanctuary county. There have been some lists which identify us as a sanctuary county. But we have never taken a position that we are a sanctuary county.
Well, thank you. That's, I could answer that with confidence when asked again in the future. And that concludes my comments.
Sure. I think sanctuary is not a legal term, correct?
I think it's more of a political term.
Yeah, here's what I mean to say is, I get it. I think it's understood in the state of the law that the local governments are not meant to enforce immigration law, correct?
Well, it's much more complicated than that.
Yeah, it's way beyond that.
We do have policies at, the prison has policies with regard to people that we will not accept prisoners that are there just based on detainer for ICE. However, if we have prisoners that are being released that do have ICE detainees, we do notify ICE and give ICE an opportunity to come pick them up for a certain period of time. I don't remember what the time period is, to be honest with you. But it's a sufficient amount of time for ICE to get there. If ICE does not show up within that timeframe, the prisoner is released. That policy sometimes has probably landed us on some of these lists as being a sanctuary county. But we have never, the Commissioners of the county have never declared us to be a sanctuary county. That's the history of this.
And that policy is determined by the prison board or by the Commissioners?
The prison board.
Okay, got it. So that's not on the agenda today, but I think if we want it to be.
Yeah, I wasn't making an agenda topic. I just wanted clarification.
Yeah. All right. So we're going to move on. And we're going to start with an update from our District Attorney's Office from Laurel House and Mission Kids on anti-human trafficking activities. And I'm going to ask Brianna Ringwood, Deputy District Attorney, to come up to start that presentation. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Okay, so I am here today, Brianna Ringwood. I work for the Office of the District Attorney. And I'm here to speak to you all about Montgomery County's response to human trafficking on behalf of a team of people, actually, a team of our partners, who are, many of which are present here today. I'm not going to take up time to introduce them all, as I'm sure, I know you are all aware from the agenda, who is present. Before I get started, I think it's important to just quickly define what human trafficking is, because there are a lot of myths and misconceptions about what human trafficking is. Human trafficking is a serious crime and involves the exploitation of a person or an individual for the purpose of obtaining a labor or a sex act. For adults, this means oftentimes the use of force, fraud, or coercion to obtain labor or a sex act. For minors, however, it's the exchange of anything of value in return for the performance of a sex act. And that's specifically talking about child sex trafficking. In other words, in short, there's no such thing as a child prostitute. Again, as I mentioned, there's a lot of myths and misconceptions about what human trafficking is. I'm not going to go through all that in detail today for sake of time. But you can see several of those points referenced on my PowerPoint slide. So what are we doing in Montgomery County? I will say that our conversations about our response to human trafficking in Montgomery County started about a little less than 10 years ago. At that time, there really was no unified standardized response to address human trafficking across the state. There were some key cases that our team, our multidisciplinary team identified around that time period that really highlighted that these cases are very unique and complex. And so they require a different approach to the investigating, investigation of this crime, but also to supporting and providing services to victims. And so we, a lot of us started talking. And the other thing that was identified is kind of a mindset in our communities that it's sort of a not in my backyard mentality, which really was a hindrance to us being able to identify and properly respond to these cases. So not long after we started having these conversations, a grant opportunity arose and that was seized and led by our local Child Advocacy Center, Center Mission Kids, as an opportunity to really push us forward in this regard. So in 2018, we applied for that grant and started some initial planning and discussion. In 2019, we were awarded $300,000 to really start this work. And so the work began. The work involved the collaboration of 20-plus partner agencies, local Montgomery County agencies. We met bi-monthly. We met quarterly. We were divided up into various subgroups to tackle certain issues. We reviewed protocols and procedures across the country and really talked within each of our subgroups about what are each of our disciplines, what the needs were, what the issues were, to develop protocols that really met the needs of these cases in our community. We, in addition, there were, there were multiple goals for that grant that included not just developing protocols for Montgomery County, but also creating protocols and procedures that could be shared and replicated across the state, across the state, which we have done so. In addition, we've created and implemented training curriculum for our team members, our, part of our multidisciplinary team, but also for multidisciplinary teams that exist across the state. So this is just a quick list, just so you can kind of see visually how many partners, that agencies that we worked with that are here locally based in Montgomery County. We, again, divided into subgroups to discuss issues like the identification of human trafficking cases, prosecution and law enforcement, providing services to victims, training, and policy writing. And we came, we did identify as a group some common themes, those themes being the identification of cases, how to coordinate a collaborative multidisciplinary response, and the need for specialization and training, because these cases are so unique and so, so complex. So as a result of this really great grant opportunity and the commitment and collaboration of all of our stakeholders, we, you know, had, we achieved a lot, frankly. We, on the left side and some of the bullet points on the right side, you can see some of the resources that were created, some really great resources that we've actually brought with us today to share with everyone in this room and are happy to provide to anyone who wants to provide that at their, to refer to it or to provide at their agencies. In addition to creating these resources that help identify, help identify the red flags for human trafficking cases and the resources available to victims, we also created Montgomery County Model Sex Trafficking Response Protocol for minors and for adults. Our minor protocols are coordinated through our local Child Advocacy Center, Mission Kids. And our adult protocols are really a collaborative response amongst many different agencies. We also created, as I mentioned, one of the goals was to create a model sex trafficking protocol that could be easily replicated across the state, which is what we did. We also gained some insight, some pretty key insights about these cases and how to effectively respond and support to, respond to and effectively support victims of human trafficking. Again, these takeaways were the identification, collaboration with other partners and training and specialization. It's really hard to distill everything that we accomplished, frankly. But these are kind of some of the topics that we, we took away. First, I'll just point out with identification that improving the response, we found, this came, this was a topic that came out of every subgroup. Improving the response begins with identifying, improving our ability to identify these cases. Most victims already have systems involvement. However, they don't self-identify as victims of human trafficking, and they don't report their victimization to the authorities. So improving our ability as a team to identify, provide services to this population really means, it really is the, is the key here for, to be able to properly, effectively respond. And as a result, in our county, we have seen an increase in identified cases since we've implemented these resources and the training for our team members. The easiest way to represent this is by looking at our child sexual exploitation, because that is tracked. As I know the District Attorney has mentioned to you, we certainly need to, we need support for things like our ARAMAS program that allow us to attack, to track adult cases. But with kids, we have a little bit more ability to, to really show you just how much, since we've implemented these protocols, how we've been able to identify these cases, which means, you know, those 149 cases that we've indicated there, they could have multiple victims. But most importantly, those are, those are kids who now have much more for support than they would have had previously, because we're able to identify the complex needs involved. The other key here is collaboration, because the dynamics of human trafficking are complex. And so we really need everyone in this community to be able to work together to support both the identification, investigation, and also provision of services to this population. The most effective response is a victim-centered one, a trauma-informed one, and most importantly, a multidisciplinary one. And just, this is just, it's a little bit hard to see on the screen, but this just kind of shows you just how complex the needs are here. This is just a visual representation of all the services that we need to be able to provide to victims of human trafficking. The goal being to meet basic needs, to provide other services that help them get out of that life. But as you can tell from just looking at the screen, this is a tall order. There's a lot of need here. And so no one person or agency is really able to meet these needs alone. So we have to work together. And we do. And we do, we do work together with some of the agencies that you see reprimanded here, or excuse me, represented here, Salvation Army, Victim Services Center of Montgomery County, Laurel House Women's Center. Many of these agencies are represented here to support, to support our presentation today. In addition, we, this area requires specialization, and we've developed that in Montgomery County. Picture there is Claire Henderson, who is the CSEC Case Coordinator and Advocate at Mission Kids. She does all of the collaboration and logistical coordination with all of our team members to make sure that these cases are, are supported. We also have present today Detective Kathleen Kelly, who is our Child Exploitation and Human Trafficking Detective in Montgomery County Detectives. She's also the Task Force Coordinator and is cross-sworn with the, with the FBI. I mentioned collaboration. Collaboration doesn't just happen within our counties, because victims and traffickers cross borders. So we also have to coordinate with other jurisdictions, federal and surrounding counties. And then we also have a Human Trafficking Assistant District Attorney in our office as well. We also provide continuous training in Montgomery County for our stakeholders and our partners with, whose staff come and frequently come in contact. with, whose staff come in, frequently come in contact with human trafficking victims, and we provide and ongoing professional development for the people who are specializing in this work. And in addition, Mission Kids has kind of taken the lead to train, along with some other Montgomery County subject matter experts, to train other people across the straight state so that they can implement similar protocols and they can educate their partners to be able to likewise improve their identification and response. There are ongoing challenges, many of these challenges, I'm sure are challenges that you've heard of, you are, you know, kind of across the board in Montgomery County as far as housing. I'm hap, we're happy to talk to you more about, about what the ongoing challenges are and how we can support this, you know, support our team and the needs of, of human trafficking victims. But really, this is not just the work of the district attorney's office, this is the work of many, and we have been working on it for a very long time. And, and I think we're, we are, we have moved the ball forward quite, quite a bit. We can always do better, and that's where honestly, obviously, your support is always help, helpful. And so just a quick thank you to all the agencies whose logos are depicted on this screen, but also present in the room who have helped us get to where we are. And finally, a quick mention, I know it was mentioned earlier, don't forget, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, it is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Many human trafficking victims experience both child abuse and sexual assault. These are just two events that you can go to or to support this cause and build awareness. These are support, these are two events that just two of the agencies in our county that do this work are, are putting on this month, you are all invited to attend. And I will just make a quick, I guess, I'll just note quickly that the staff at these agencies are extremely dedicated. They show up, they speak up, they don't show up and speak up for people that you necessarily will have, you know, show up at a meeting like this and that you're going to hear from at a meeting like this. They show up and speak up for the people who are the most vulnerable in our society, who in times of great need. And their work is hard, their work is important, and it means a lot to them when their elected officials show up and when community members show up to, to speak for them and also the population that they, or the people that they serve. So thank you very much for the time, and I'm here to answer any questions, and I have some other partners that can help as well.
Sure, so yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, we really appreciate it, and thank you all for the tremendous work that you do. And as you outlined, we know how difficult it is, and you're really addressing needs in very vulnerable populations, so I want to thank you. If you, you have any questions?
Yeah, first off, you know, thank you for coming, present today. I've been, you know, this was something that I wanted to get on the agenda, and I appreciate that we're able to get there today. And I want to thank everyone that's here in support of this, this topic. I guess one of the things that wasn't covered, there's two things that I really wanted to see if we could have covered. One, one is, is that I, I think we need to have better awareness around explaining, and I don't know how we do it, explaining to the public at large of what really goes on within human trafficking, because I don't think people truly understand the depths of what human trafficking is. And obviously, when you show all of the programs and all of the different initiatives or things that have to be in place to support it, it leads to, my second point is, is that what you didn't get a chance to touch on is how widespread is it in not only Montgomery County, but in the state of Pennsylvania or even nationally? We tend to not ever go down these roads of actually communicating out the total impacts of what human trafficking is, but I would like to give you the opportunity to, if you know, if you can provide a little bit more statistics around, I mean, you showed 139 cases, but that's, that's just a drop in the bucket. And I think that we need to be a little bit more open as far as how in-depth or how deep, how much human trafficking is actually occurring.
Yeah.
Can I add one thing? I think just for context, I think it was said at a prior meeting that Montgomery County has, like, was it you or a commenter who said that it was like the second largest human trafficking issue in the country? And I don't know if we had any factual back or data around that, or if you have anything of the sort.
What I, so unfortunately, we have, we have several limitations for us to be able to measure the occurrence of human trafficking in our community, but also nationwide, also worldwide. The first is that victims of human trafficking do not self-identify, and they often present to the system as victims of other crimes, for example, domestic violence, sexual assault, child, child sexual abuse, internet, child, internet exploitation. And so it's a little bit hard to give like solid numbers for that reason. Secondly, you know, with the adult, with adult cases, it's, it's also a little bit difficult to track because of our, you know, the way that our records are kept, kept frankly, make it difficult to, and I know this is a topic that, that has come up before, that we need better debt, better debt, better ability to access data in Montgomery County law enforcement. I'll, I'll keep it as simple as that. So I think that answers in part your question that we don't have, I don't have exact numbers. The numbers that you saw today were child sexual exploitation, so that's a very specific subset of human trafficking. So that's not put up there to represent all of the human trafficking that's occurring in Montgomery County.
Right.
It's meant to, to give you the clearest number that we can to show you how we've improved identifying these cases and providing services to victims.
So, and I appreciate that, and, and I know it is hard to, to, to track in some instances because as I've learned, it's extremely hard for victims to come forward and, and, but again, when I look at everything that you, that you presented today as far as between the grants and the, and the programs that are in place, and then the number of groups that are trying to help or be involved, it would only lend it's me to believe that it's very widespread.
I think that, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Krishna. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's all right, go ahead.
I think that the number of agencies that I've listed on the screen and that I've talked about partnering in this regard is really a reflection of the complex needs that this population of, of, this population has. So there are so many different needs that a victim of human trafficking has as far as finding shelter, employment, mental health issues, there's, it's vast. And that's why a few slides ago, I showed all the kind of the image of just how many different ways we have to support their basic needs, let alone the services that we need to provide that. So I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying that the number of agencies is not necessarily correlated to the number of cases, it's more a reflection of the needs.
Right. And I don't know, Leslie, I don't know if there's, if there's anything that from Mission Kids that you want, could add to?
To your question?
Yeah.
I've never heard that Montgomery County is one of the largest. I mean, obviously, I would say we're probably the third largest in the state of Pennsylvania just due to our population, right? What I would say is Polaris Project is probably the best metrics of where it happens across the country. We're definitely a red spot. We're a red spot because of the, the turnpike and all of the major highways that go through here, 95. I mean, that is really why that's the case, but, and it also really correlates with how vulnerable your population is in your community, where we know that ki, I, I obviously specialize in children, we know that kids are more vulnerable for economic reasons, family reasons, social reasons, and so in those communities, we are obviously concerned. Obviously, we went from 32 cases to 149 cases just with the education identification. Nothing else changed, so I think that's, that's part of our problem, and we need our, we need to continue that effort.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't believe it was, Montgomery County was considered, I know Montgomery County was deemed a hotspot, but I, I, there was, and again, I'm not, you know, putting credence on this, but Pennsylvania, at one point, there's been articles that are written that Pennsylvania is considered one of the worst states in, in the country when it comes to human trafficking. I don't have the numbers in front of me to quantify that, I'm only repeating what I heard, but I didn't, I don't believe it was stated that Montgomery County is considered one of the worst. All I know is that Montgomery County, as you said, is a, is a hotspot, and, you know, definition of hotspot can vary, but it's important that we lift these topics up and we lift the, these, these seminars or whatever that's to, to help that identify and train people, help people be, identify or train people that, that self-identify or, because it's, 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 it's an issue. It's an issue that needs to be attacked head-on. And, and hopefully, with all the good work that you, that you're doing and the DA's office is doing, and everything that you guys are all doing, we, hopefully, we start to get in a more, get in a direction where we're reducing or eliminating as much as possible. But we have to continue to keep this topic in the forefront of, of everyone's minds because it is a real issue.
Agreed.
I'm glad that you mentioned the myths in the beginning in terms of this idea that it's not necessarily like a cross-border international issue all the time, and, you know, there can be cases that, you know, are very much not just domestic, but, you know, at home, so to speak, you know, or, you know, things that you would associate with other crimes that don't, you know, involve crossing borders or, or, or anything like that. So I'm also glad to hear that the, the RMS and the data modernization efforts will help to collect data on adults as well, because I think that's really important for us to understand. But I want to thank all of you again for being here, would absolutely love to, to visit and learn more about all the work the agencies are doing on this and so many other issues, so thank you again.
Thank you so much for the time.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Karen DeAngelo, the Executive Director and District Administrator for the Norristown Public Library, to come up. This week is National Library Week. Welcome, is Karen here?
I'm here for you.
Okay, right there. Got it. Did I give the library thing?
Coming up there or should we hold it?
Oh, right. Do you have the, do you have a proclamation for that? If you'd like to say anything, you can, and then we'll invite you up for us.
We do have a couple things, and then we'll come on up.
Sounds good.
I am Karen DeAngelo, and I'm the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library. It is the county library, it is the Norristown Library, and it is the District Center for Montgomery County Library. And one of the things that you have committed to as commissioners and as the county is renovating the library. It's a 50-year-old building. I'd love to invite you over to turn the lights on and off using the breaker boxes, because that's how we do it there, and, and, and visit the library and help imagine with me what that library could be for this county. And one of the things that we are doing, we're working with Kimball Grant Architects, and at the end of the month, there will be a open discussion for, for the community to come in and say what they believe the library should be, what they need it to be for, for the community, because the library connects people. They connect people to the community, to the world, to each other, and to themselves. The library, public library is one of the few places left anywhere where anyone can come in, where it's a cool, safe place or a warm place when the air conditioning works, which it doesn't, but you're working on that.
We're working on it.
You're working on that.
Thank you.
And we are working on moving to another location, Logan Commerce Center, for a few years while the renovations are being done, so they can be done more efficiently and quickly. And it's, it's going to be a really exciting time to be part of the county and to be part of the library world. Next week is National Library Week, and Tracy Reed is our District Consultant Librarian, and she's going to give you some more information with the numbers, because she's the number person, I'm the generalist.
Thank you so much for recognizing Library Week. The theme of this year's Library Week is Ready, Set, Library, which you can see. Just to give you some, some scope, there are 20 libraries and 34 brick and mortar locations in Montgomery County that employ 673 people in the county. That's amazing. The, the commitment in Montgomery County to its libraries and the commitment of the residents of Montgomery County to its libraries is amazing to me, and I certainly appreciate it. The 20 libraries, the 34 brick and mortar locations, as well as the bookmobiles that serve our underserved kind of northwestern part of the county circulated over 5.8 million items last year. That's 5.8 million items in the hands of Montgomery County residents, which is pretty awesome. We, we had close to 17,000 programs that 289,000 people attended in our libraries. That's both within the library walls and out, in outreach presentations and storytimes in parks and community days and everything like that. I mentioned that we have bookmobiles that serve our underserved areas, but we also have a delivery service that goes between all 20 of those libraries and circulates over 1.6 million items a year, so that if you place a, a request for an item in Lower Marion, you can pick it up in Indian Valley with a seamless experience. That's incredible. That is a commitment to libraries, and I certainly appreciate it. The support that the county shows, not only with the Norristown Library, but around the county to its libraries, as I said, is immense and incredible, and I certainly appreciate that. And on behalf of all of those 673, 78, three staff members, I want to say thank you to all of you for that commitment.
Please come up, we'd love to present you with this proclamation in honor of 2024 National Library Week.
Wait, I got to see if she has her book earrings on.
I do. Stay free. I, I work very hard at being a walking, talking advertisement for libraries. And I'm going to look forward to having you come over and, come over and visit.
Absolutely.
Many libraries and visits.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
It's always best to be out.
Okay. It's me. I think as, as it was mentioned, that, that, you know, the county's starting this endeavor of remodeling or, and I, I, I'm looking forward to see how it all reimagines itself in this process, you know? So it's going to be exciting over the next year, so, so thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Great. So we've got another update that I think will be of interest to many folks who have been to these meetings and providing comments over the last several months, really. And I'm going to bring Scott France to talk about the county's decision, latest decision regarding Erie Street Prison.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good morning. I'm here to give an update and overview of current efforts and directions towards the redevelopment of the county-owned tract at the corner of DeKalb and Erie Street, which includes the former county prison and current county-owned surface parking lot. The county commissioners have tasked the Planning Commission to lead this phase of the redevelopment of the tract and give the administration the information that they need to determine the county's course in addressing this site. And we're grateful to have this opportunity to be part of this process and excited to help determine if a preservation-minded solution can be identified and pursued. We've actually been working on it for several months now, and today I want to share what our efforts have included thus far and what the plan is moving forward. I don't want to rehash the discussion and efforts toward redeveloping the site during 2023, other than to clearly state that the county has heard the concerns expressed during that time period, and it is engaging a process that will determine if there is a development-driven option to repurpose the site with the goal of preserving at least some of the historic architecture of the prison that still exists on this site. It's fairly well-known that the prison, which operated at its most well-known capacity from around 1851 to its closure in 1986, has sat dormant and in an increasing state of deterioration. A demolition plan for the prison had been assembled, and the process to obtain a demolition permit was initiated during the fall of 2023 until it reached the point of submission with the Norristown Council. And at that time, the county administration decided to pause its efforts in anticipation of a new Board of Commissioners and the loud call from the public to seek any alternative to full demolition. A six-month extension to the demolition permit application was accepted by Norristown's Council. That's not the permit itself that was accepted, but the request to extend that period. And soon after that point, the Planning Commission was asked to lead this effort to explore a private-public partnership that could accomplish several goals. to explore a private-public partnership that could accomplish several goals, including some degree of preservation and development of the site. I'll have to go to the next slide. So I want to begin with outlining what is a fairly extensive set of goals to kind of give some clarity to how this process has evolved. Through working with the county's administration and the new Board of Commissioners, we ultimately zeroed in on these eight goals that reflect the intentions that will help to guide us in determining if a solution can be found. I'm going to go through them with a couple of comments along the way. Number one, to recognize county and Norristown development goals related to the development of the tract. Number two, to inspire investment and increased revenue for Norristown. This is a two-and-a-half-acre site, and you can see it outlined in the aerial picture there by red. It includes the prison, as well as the adjacent county-owned parking, surface parking lot in combination. I'll touch on that in a moment. But as two-and-a-half acres in the heart of Norristown, we can see it out the window with the blinds open, this is clearly an important site and has tremendous value to the municipality and the community. Number three, to enhance public space and vibrancy of the area in conjunction with the New Justice Center campus. This site is right across from the courthouse. We are across the street. And while most of the construction activity in the New Justice Center is on the other side of that courthouse, the campus itself all melds together. So the goal is to integrate that in both in terms of county operations as well as a public space and benefit to the community of Norristown. Number four, maximize the opportunity for a developer to preserve the most historically and architecturally relevant areas of the prison. This is why we're here. We're trying to set the stage, create a process, use every mechanism that is available to see if we can find this solution and work together with a private-public partnership. Number five, utilize the entire tract, the prison lot and the parking lot area, as needed to facilitate the most opportunity for county and municipal uses and architectural preservation. We'll get into that in a little more detail. But again, this is a, I'll call it a new approach. I'm sure it was considered in the past as well. But the idea of merging these two adjacent sites, and the county owns both of them, makes for a much more flexible and opportunistic situation. If you just look at the prison site, which if you make out on the aerial is kind of the narrow lot on the left side of that red box, while it's significant in size, it's not as conducive to redevelopment if you were only able to kind of play with that area. It would make reuse and repurposing very difficult. Opening it up to the county parking lot really does change the calculus and hopefully gives prospective developers the opportunity to envision a project that benefits not only the financial return of the investment in the property, but also the community and county benefits. Number six, gain community support and meaningful participation with partners and community members through a transparent process. Hopefully, today is evidence of that intent, and we will continue that transparency and keep updates as this process goes on. And number seven, encourage sustainability in design and process, community connections, and construction. I think this is a goal we would apply to most of our county capital projects, so it's certainly worthy in this set as well. And number eight is a little different than the preceding seven. If you will, a little, a bit of honesty and a reality dose with this. But we have to recognize the prison could be, the building could be preserved forever with a blank check, with taxpayer funding to stabilize the site, and you'd have an empty, vacated prison there. The investment to do so would be significant, and obviously, there are many reasons why that would not be the approach. But we have to recognize that we're opening the door. We're doing everything we can to provide for the developers to have the opportunity to give us ideas, for the community to step up, to give ideas. And I'll explain that process in a moment. But we're hoping that through this effort, we do come to a solution. If we don't, then we'll have to reassess and, at the end of the day, come back and determine how the county commissioners would like to proceed. Next, or actually, before the next, if you go back one. One other thing I just want to set the stage for. The process that I've been referring to is called an RFEI. It stands for Request for Expression of Interest. This will be a public process where outsiders, developers, can submit their ideas and proposals for use of the site, given the parameters that we set. And I'll go into those details as well. Next slide. Before I do, one last mention of the diligence going into this project. As I said, we've been working on it since the beginning of the year, and there was a lot to go through in the county, other county staff. I want to acknowledge, in the Planning Commission, Patty Gotten Plan and Aaron Feely, who have been instrumental and done even more work than myself, and ultimately, hopefully, gained some of the credit when we achieved success. I also want to acknowledge our Assets and Infrastructure Department, who has led this effort through past direction and all of the intricacies and developments and processes. They continue to be part of this project and will be invaluable in their expertise and ability to find the right process and solution. So this slide kind of details just a few of the things that we've been through, and we just want to kind of give the public a sense of how this process has evolved. There's lots of documents, lots of guides, obviously, historic preservation, as many in this room know. It is quite an effort, and every situation has its own uniqueness. And I think that Aries Street Prison probably has maybe a little more uniqueness than your typical situation. But we're relying on what's happened in the past, what others have done, what strategies have been employed, and the realities of what we're dealing with here. So some of these documents and research have aided that, looking at examples, best practices. And even the public has stepped up. One item here, recognized, I'm not sure if she's here today, but Celeste Morello provided her own assessment. She's a professional in the area of historic preservation and really did an extensive and pretty incredible bit of research in this document that outlined the history of the prison, both architecturally and in terms of use. And I found that, we found that extremely interesting and valuable. In fact, we may talk to her in the future. Maybe there's an element of that report that could supplement the RFEI and provide more information in the interest of giving developers everything they need to make a good proposal. And then we met with several groups as well. Developers, and we kept these meetings confidential. I don't, I want to keep the actual people, I don't want to disclose that here. And we were talking in general, the projects that they went, that we thought might have relevance, that we could learn from, getting their input without talking specifically about the prison in the interest of not interfering with legal processes. Another group we met with was Historic Preservation Specialists. This was invaluable. They provided a lot of information. Regional and state groups and representatives, they approached us. They were willing to offer help, their assistance, their knowledge, and we're grateful for that and have learned a lot from it already and hope to continue some of those relationships. And then Norristown Municipal Staff. Obviously, anything that happens ultimately goes to Norristown's doorstep, both from a regulatory environment, but also in the spirit of partnership and finding a solution that is beneficial to the county as well as the municipality. I'll have to go to the next slide. So here's probably the last slide of major substance, and I think some important takeaways are in here. Let me start with going back to what I mentioned at the front with the demolition permit. County commissioners have unanimously directed us that that suspended permit application may be withdrawn from the municipality of Norristown. The date that that suspension would come to an end is May 21st, but we will, well in advance, within the next week, will be submitting a letter to the municipality of Norristown asking them to remove consideration for that permit. It does not, you know, indicate any ultimate final endpoint, but it does remove that from the table, which I know much of the public has asked for. And it makes sense, I think, from our standpoint, if a solution can't be found over the extended time period in front of us to figure this out, and we have to go back to a demolition approach. That is, in the universe of possibilities, it is my sincere hope in many in this room that we will not go to that point. But if we do, then we'd have to reset that process and go back from the beginning with the HARP, as well as the Norristown Council. But I do feel we'd be in a much better position in having exhausted, hopefully, a lot of effort and strategies to avoid that. The next thing I want to mention is the Structural Assessment Report. One of those items that came out of the meetings with professionals and the preservationists, which was tremendously valuable, was the need for a full structural assessment report. We had some documents, we had some firms do a visual inspection of the site that gave good and useful information at the time. But to let developers know exactly what they're dealing with from a technical standpoint, what it would take to implement part or all of the existing prison structure, there's a lot of information they need to know. And if they don't know it, that could hinder their ability to give us a realistic proposal and limit, again, that goal of maximizing the opportunity to find success here. So we are underway with that process. I wish, I was hoping at this time we'd be able to announce a contract with one of the firms from our enabled vendor list. The first round of seeking that firm unfortunately had a delay. We probably were rushing it a little bit, hoping to meet this timeline, and did not get the responses that we need. So we're going to reissue, look at the scope again, which we've already done. And we're very confident that, we think some of the firms that were contacted will be able to respond, but it may take a little more time than originally anticipated. That report itself is probably going to take about four months. At least, that's what we're asking for, to do a full assessment that will be beneficial. And we'll see what they say if it requires any longer time. But that does establish a certain important timeline element to this, which I'll summarize in the end. So once we get that Structural Assessment Report, that will become part of the RFEI, or the Request for an Expression of Interest. That will give, again, give the applicants, the developers who submit proposals and ideas, the ability to have a stronger base of information to make the most useful proposals that they can. Some of the conditions that we're going to put into that RFEI, which address the county's needs and uses on this tract, include approximately 40,000 square feet of county office space, which is integrated into the ultimate vision of the county campus and operations as the county seat. As we integrate the existing surface parking lot, we will need to maintain the provision of parking to that extent. However, it would likely go into the format of structured parking as to increase the viability of additional development on the site. And there may be additional parking needs beyond that for whatever new uses are proposed. We also have talked to Norristown. One of the things, and this hasn't been talked about as much, but I think it's been stated publicly before, we are exploring the notion of a new firehouse for Norristown. They used to have up to five separate firehouses within the municipality. I think it's down to three now. Their ultimate goal and vision has been to consolidate into just one central firehouse and upgraded facilities. We want to support that. Originally, it was discussed whether that could be part of this tract or part of the redevelopment of this tract. I think that would promote a lot of limitations to try to implement that use along with other uses and needs. But that doesn't mean we can't still come to some other arrangement. We're looking at other properties the county owns and talking to the fire marshal there to see if there's other options, which, again, without getting into specifics, I think we do have options in that regard. And then finally, that other, those other uses, what the developers can come in, what the public can come in and say, let's put this here in conjunction with these uses, in conjunction with preserving part of the prison, there's a solution here. And that's what we're looking for. And I think that, you know, even during the discussion over the last year and previously, we've all wanted to see someone step up. Now we're going to give everyone the tools and the mechanism to do so and see what that turns up. Really want to quickly touch base also on the existing zoning. This is a positive thing, I think. If you just look at what Norristown has in their zoning district right now, which is the town center, it's very conducive and not as restrictive as it could be towards possible solutions. And just a few of those aspects include the fact that there are no front, rear, or side yard setbacks required, indicative of a very urbanized Main Street kind of setting. And then also, the maximum height in this area, some may be surprised, although this building reflects it, is 10 stories. So there's a lot of vertical space. It's not a small tract to begin with, but when you consider vertical space available, that opens the door to finding a partnership that can facilitate both private development as well as the public and county uses that are envisioned. And then finally, there is no minimum parking required. So there may be, obviously, with the developer solution, they may identify a need for parking. We've seen some developments recently in Norristown that don't have the standard, you know, two spaces per thousand square feet or whatever it may be. Norristown has an immense wealth of transportation opportunities beyond just vehicles. So that plays into it and makes more options available, which is a very positive thing. Let's go to the last slide. So this is a very generalized and simple timeline, again, to help keep the public aware of what's to come ahead. Note at the bottom of that chart, the demo permit, demolition permit is, date is there. Again, we expect to resolve that well before and have that withdrawn. The RFEI development will take place, it has already been taking place and will continue, at the same time as pursuit of the Structural Assessment Report, which I noted previously, with about four months. Once we get a firm under contract, and hopefully about four months to produce, at our most optimistic, we're looking probably at early September for having that report. Once we have that report, we put it into the RFEI, and we're ready to launch on making that public and starting the process to solicit responses. That process, again, estimating, could be about four months. Perhaps it's open for two months for responses, and then there's the evaluation period and eventual recognition. What happens after that depends. If this isn't as strict as an RFP process, where there would be a contract at the end, but the negotiation with an idea that is seen as the direction that the county administration wants to move forward with will then be initiated and resolved, depending on what that is and what it entails. But that's basically where we're at. And we're, again, like I said, very excited. The timeline may be longer than you thought, but I think the payoff and the intent to try to achieve this, well worth it.
Thank you for that thorough update. Sorry. Thank you for the thorough update. I thought you were just going to say we withdrew the permit, so I was like, okay. I think people got the punchline. But no, it's important to understand that the level of depth that you need to engage, you know, with the municipality. And thank you to the Planning Commission for engaging in all of that, because it's an important space, and there's a lot of great things that can happen right across from, you know, our courthouse and all the county buildings. So it's important we do this right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, great update. Thank you. Thank you for your staff. I think it's important, I mean, everyone knows where I stood on this. This was a priority, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners as well as giving this opportunity for us to seeing that there could be ways to, you know, preserve, listening to the community, preserve certain portions of the prison, as well as opening up that entire space to redevelopment efforts. I think that there's, when we actually start talking with developers or when they actually see that we could, when we start looking at the things that we could do on that entire parcel now, it may generate a little bit more interest, especially when we're talking about an office building, you know, potentially a parking garage. You know, there's, and as I mentioned, we've talked in the past, there are sophisticated ways that we could actually incorporate a firehouse into a parking garage if we had to go down, if we wanted to go down that road. So I think it's, there's endless opportunities here. I'm glad that we're taking this step to see what can be or should be or could be. I look forward to, you know, seeing, as we continue to evolve, I look forward to seeing where this goes. But I'm encouraged, because I really believe that ultimately this entire site is going to be developed in such a way that everyone will be happy, and it's going to meet a lot of the needs of Norristown as well. So again, thank you for the, for all the hard work, and I want to thank all the community members for all their hard work for, you know, lifting up this important issue as well. And again, I do want to thank my fellow commissioners for working with, you know, all collectively working together to provide, hopefully, a long-term solution.
And when we get to the end, please, and we know we probably don't even have to ask. We look forward to the assistance, help, getting the word out, getting developers interested. There are people who do this, who know better than all of us how to do it. We want to tap into that, and hopefully that comes out in the process. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So we're going to move to public comment now. And this is just the first public comment period, which means that if there's an issue on the agenda items K through J that you would like to speak to, please let us know which comments those are or which section you'd like to speak on, and you'll have three minutes. Do we have any commenters for the agenda items?
Well, I could make a comment on any aspect of the agenda, not just...
Pending votes.
No, just anything on the agenda.
Pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. Go ahead.
Peggy De La Santi.
That was a really promising report. Nice to, nice to hear all that. But good morning, commissioners and all the attendees. My name is Peggy De La Santi and I'm the former owner of a very successful Main Street business for over 42 years. For those of you that don't know me, Mean Changes was known as an icon. First, I'd like to extend my sincere condolences to the Winter family. Prayers go out to, to them. I'm here today in support to withdraw the application-
Peggy, it has to be, what we're saying is any, anything on action items that we're going to be taking on the agenda from items F and O.
So nothing about-
So we'll come back to you.
At the end of the meeting, you can make whole comments.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
That's, no worries.
So essentially-
So I got the first part.
Yep, you're good.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. So essentially, this first section is just, if there's a vote we're about to take, if there's an item that you'd like to comment before we make that vote or decision, this is your chance to speak. At the end of those votes, we'll have a general period in which you can talk about the prison or any of the other issues that you may want to bring up.
So it's basically agenda items F through J?
Yeah. Okay, actually, yep.
Cassandra Moravito.
I'll wait till the end.
Okay.
I'll wait till the end as well.
Okay.
Olivia Brady.
I'll wait till the end as well.
David Morgan.
David Morgan from Ambler. I'm commenting about the RFP Exhibit A number one, which relates to the website. I encourage the website to be as user-friendly as possible for helping taxpayers. For instance, when we go searching for financial information, we have to go through the finance department and look up budgets. But I really think it's a great opportunity to have right at the top, an analysis of all this spending, not only just the budget amounts reported in this website design. If it, if it needs to be done professionally, we can't do it here in-house, then that's fine. I did mention that I had a concern about the disclosure about the Planning Commission budget being a large number, like 66 million, 63 million. I thank Mr. Scott France for giving me some feedback about that. Within that kind of disclosure, we would know, as he wrote to me, that the Planning Commission includes reconstruction of Ridge Pike, county campus trail, sorry, cross-country trail, trail junction center, farmland and open space preservation funds, and many others. So we would learn this if there's, if we could just go as taxpayers. And I think a good model is, think of when you have a credit card, annual report, you see, oh, this category was spent on these things, specific expenditures. And you can say, oh, maybe I'm spending too much in that. And the commissioners can look at that and say, well, are we overweighting spending on some part of the budget? So that's, in, in the county, in this particular county, Mr. France wrote that we're somewhat unique in that fact that we have the projects-
Mr. Morgan, if I could, you've gone astray from the issue that we're, that are being voted on today. So this sounds more like general comments about information you'd like to see. So if you could keep to the issue of agenda items that we're voting on, otherwise, you can raise these comments at the end during public comment.
Yeah, I'm trying to fill out some of my ideas about A, one.
Understood. But the issue that we're voting on is the issue with an RFP, right? So what you're talking about is something a little bit broader than that.
Okay. Just to summarize, to finish off, I'd just like to say, if we look at these items, we can see if we can find a $30 million tax reduction and perhaps even a tax cut.
Now you're definitely far afield. Go ahead.
We will have budget discussions. You can bring that stuff up then, too. Thank you. Anybody else?
Deb Spence.
Good morning, commissioners. So, I mean, I don't kind of like this setup because the people that give their presentations, they run out the door. They don't stay to hear the public comment. And I want to speak to the Assistant DA's office because she did a presentation about sexual assault. And there's a living person here that was sexually assaulted and, and they're not pursuing the case. She was sexually assaulted by a nurse in a nursing home. And if we want to talk about a line item on the agenda, it says for developmental disabilities, there's an alternative program, spending $177,000. Who, like, who is that going to? Child Protective Services? Like, what about adults that are living with autism that are being sexually abused? The DA not wanting to pursue those cases because their words are different. This is National Autism Month. You said every other national month in, in existence, but no one said National Autism Month. This puzzle represents autism. And this is what I want, justice for Ty. But I'm getting back to the agenda because the DA ran out without letting, hearing the public comment about that presentation.
So we'd be glad to have your comments at, at the public comment section on general comment. Again, this is just for the items. And, yeah, let's, let's talk about that.
But this broke my family. Like, there's so many things-
You can speak about it, but just at the end, there's a separate public comment period at the end of the meeting.
So is government for the people or is it for you? I'm, I'm not, I'm confused.
Thank you. Any comments on agenda items? Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. So we're going to move to the votes. Anyone who has other comments can make them afterwards.
Yeah, I just want to make sure she understands. We're not telling you, you can't make your comment. There's a whole section at the end of the agenda that you could get, make those specific comments.
But yes, yes, I do understand that. But then everybody runs out and needs to hear comments.
I understand that, but-
You, you put it at the end like, oh, it's not important. Let's just put these people at the end because their voice is not important. What you do is more important up here.
So, these are legal requirements? We have to have a section before we vote on something so that people have a chance to talk to us before we vote on that thing? So that's why we're doing it in this order. It's, it's by statute. It's not just, we're not just making up rules. So with that, let me move to the approval of minutes for March 21st, 2024. I will make a motion to approve the March 21st, 2024 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
You have to second him, I guess? Second.
Any board comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the minutes pass. I will ask our Director of Human Resources, Catherine Halen, to come up to present the personnel list for this, for this meeting.
Good morning. Commissioners, you should have in front of you a final copy of the Commissioner's Department Personnel List. It's a three-page document dated April 3rd, 2024, with a timestamp of 9:00 AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the April 4th, 2024 Personnel Presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Next, Item H, an advertisement of bids and RFPs, Exhibit A. I'll motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs from Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Next, Section I, Advertisement of Bids and RFPs for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as marked in Exhibit B. I'll make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Next, on awards of contract, I'll make a motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit C. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment?
Nope.
Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, Section K, Awards of Contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force, Exhibit D. I'll make a motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, and we're here. We did all the contracts. So, now, we will move to general public comment. The only guideline is, is that it must be germane to county business, meaning that it may pertain to an issue that may come before us. So there's still some guidelines there, but other than that, it's quite general. So go ahead.
Peggy De La Santi.
Okay, take two. I'll pick up where I left off. I am here today to support the withdrawal of the application to demolish the Erie Street Prison, the historic castle-like Le Bron structure. I'm delighted to hear the report today. So thank you so much. Of course, I wrote this before I knew what was going to be in that report. Most people are not aware of the fact that this historic building has all the credentials to receive state and federal funding to restore its beauty and be reimagined into a destination to help bring traffic, revenue, and pride back into this county, this community, too. Most importantly, no taxpayers' money is required. All new construction going on in town is great, but the glass and steel from which they were made are cold and lack the character and history the prison has to offer. All she has been for the 173 years in spite of being neglected and not taken care of since the early 80s. The prison is an important part of Norristown's skyline, and it is the bookend to the original courthouse building. Both of these buildings were designed by award-winning and renowned architect Napoleon Le Bron. Imagine two Picassos, two Picasso paintings next to each other. Would you destroy either of them? I don't think so. Let me remind you that this building has been standing long before any of us were born. It deserves the time and thought to make the right decision in its favor. Once this building is destroyed, its greatness and beauty can never be replaced. It's been standing since 1851. Let us work together with the historic experts to make the right moves. My hope is that you will all work together behind the scenes for something greater than a mere grassy knoll. And I hope that Doug Seiler would be included in this, the architect. Norristown has done extensive research and drawings, plans for that building, and he should be included in this. The atmosphere that in this room is now very welcoming to its constituents, and I pray that we can continue to move forward with this endeavor with like-minded goals. Also, I was wondering if it would be possible for the friends of the prison to read the Celeste Morello report. It would be very interesting to hear her research. And on one last note, in regards to Laurel House, Shefest for an outdoor event will be held April 28th from 12 to 4, rain date, 5:5, located at Ridge and Burnside by On Classic Records. The most popular, can I just finish this? The most popular vocalist will be performing, and you will love the show. One of the girls was actually on America's Got Talent. I will also be singing. I'll be the oldest one there, just to let you know. All proceeds to benefit Laurel House Shelter for abused women and children and also unite her breast cancer, cancer support. So we really hope to see you guys possibly attend. It's going to be a great show. So thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, comment.
Cassandra Moravito.
Hello, I'm Cassandra Moravito, borough of Norristown. First, I want to thank Commissioner DiBello for making this such an important issue. When we started this project back in the end of August, early September, it's felt as if that we, our concerns fell on dead ears. And so I really appreciate that you pushed this as part of your campaign. And that I want to thank Scott France and his staff for making such a serious thing of this and looking into what the possibilities could be to use this building. From my perspective, I think that it's important to maintain the original facade of the building and, and also to utilize the space. I think we desperately need parking in downtown Norristown. If anybody wants to come to this building, it's very difficult to find parking at certain hours. So if there is a way to utilize underground parking the way they do in Philadelphia, where you dig down in that and you can do like three stories down of parking, that would be incredibly helpful. I think that it would be important to tie that building in to the, to the courthouse. There is the tunnel underneath that connected the prison to the courthouse, and I think that tunnel could be utilized. I think also that there would be an interesting way to do a public-private combination to where we, we need event space in the area. If any of you have done anything, you can either go to Oaks and get this sort of bland, dirty, very large space, or there's very small rooms. So if you want to run a conference, I would love to not have to go to Las Vegas for conferences or to Atlantic City. But when you want to bring groups of people together, it would be really nice to bring it to Montgomery County where we don't have to worry about competing with the kids at the college, et cetera. So to think about how we can have event space, what we can do on the first floor would also be something interesting. A farmer's market, a Reading Terminal Market concept, food court, an antique mall, et cetera. Another option that we threw around, I'm bringing this up because I don't know how many people have heard our options, is that the Montgomery County Historical Society has dramatically outgrown their space. They don't have event space. They don't have space to keep all the things they want to archive, et cetera. So they would be a wonderful tenant in this building to be able to, again, hold events, to have a veteran's wing, to have a wing for what has happened, history of Montgomery County, a museum area, event space, et cetera. The other issue that I think is poorly, is underserved here, is to have a hotel that can service people who are going to court. If they're bringing in witnesses, et cetera. There's a concept that I've seen in Boston and New York, a micro apartment or micro hotels where they have these very small units that you don't need much. You just need a bed, et cetera. There's wonderful opportunities to tie in with the courthouse and also be part of a destination and have open spaces. So I encourage the longest period possible to allow for applicants to submit. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, comment.
Sidell Zo.
Good morning, Sidell Zo. I'm a resident of White Marsh Township, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you in support of the prison. I did not prepare comments because I wasn't sure what we were going to hear today. But I did take notes during the presentation, and I have some comments in response to what we heard. First, I'm absolutely delighted that the Planning Commission has been asked to lead this effort. That's where the impetus should come from. And I think it's in good hands with Scott France and the staff of the Planning Commission. I am also similarly delighted to know that the prison and the adjacent surface parking lot parcel are being combined for purposes of the conditions assessment and the RFEI that will emerge from this. There was reference to this project being emblematic of a public-private partnership. That's indeed where it should be. That should be the case. But I also want to remind you this, and I made this point previously, that a project of this scope, of this size, of this complexity, of its location, is going to require a combination of public and private financing. And there is ample public financing. It need not come from Norristown. It may be not, doesn't even come from the county, although it would be nice if the county would chip in. I think that the primary two sources for funding for a project here to complement the private investment of a developer are state and federal funding. And I've mentioned this before in previous, in my previous comments and letters, but I think RACB, Keystone Funding, and LSA Funding are primary sources that should be explored. And in fact, there is already RACB funding that's been allocated to the county for a project in which this, the scope of this project would, would nicely fit. I am delighted to hear that this will be a transparent process. And obviously, it is. It already is. And I, and I appreciate that on the part of the Planning Commission, and more importantly, on the part of the commissioners, to making sure that there is transparency throughout this process. Of course, delighted to hear that the county will be withdrawing- Of course, delighted to hear that the county will be withdrawing its application for a demolition permit. I'm eager to see that letter. And I think although you might say that it is more symbolic than anything else, symbolism counts. It sends the message to the community, to the development community as well, that we're serious about exploring the options here, and we're not going to ram demolition through. And finally, the structural assessment, right on, absolutely, long overdue. I do have a question about the timeline, if I may ask, address that question to Mr. France.
Well, you can ask the question.
Okay. A little confused about the relationship between the, the structural assessment and the issue of the RFEI. Will the RFEI wait until the assessment is complete?
Yes.
Okay, so it won't be issued, the RFI won't be issued until the assessment is completed, and then it will be made available. The assessment will be made available in conjunction with the RFEI. Thank you very much. I really appreciate all this.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Olivia Brady.
Good morning, Olivia Brady, Norristown Municipality. Thank you all for the opportunity for Scott France to present the timeline for the prison study. I'm very excited to see that, and I'm very excited to hear that you're going to be withdrawing the demolition. I just want to reiterate, and I don't know how important this is as far as the public submission of that, but I think it's important that the three commissioners voice support for this project, because when the RFEI goes out and the developers look at it, they want to see support from the county in order to make sure that they're going to be getting what they need in order to do this project. And finally, I want to reiterate that it is important that we make this prison a destination. Like this county seat needs a place for people to come here on purpose to see something interesting and to learn something about our history and about what we're all about. We are not getting, we don't have the restaurants and the activities and things for people to want to come here, and it's unfortunate that they turn away with a bad, bad reputation of our county seat. So I would like, love to see this add to creating a destination for our county seat and making our county seat the envy of all others. Thank you.
Jim Malick.
Can I give you a guy some stuff?
You can just leave it.
Give it to the board secretary.
Board secretary.
Hope they'll give it to you later, someone will refer to it, so. Jim Malick, Worcester. You talked about National Public Health Week, and I'm going to give you my perspective as a doctor on how the county mismanaged COVID and how it's got to get fixed. It can't happen again. Lockdowns didn't work, and they destroyed kids and businesses. That can never happen again. It's well documented. Go look it up if you want the information. I'll give you all the information you need. Masks didn't work. Cochrane Study, huge study, no effect at all. Having people walk around with masks, absolutely stupid. That can't happen again. Six feet social distancing. They asked Fauci where he got it. They made it up. Another made up figure. All the circles, six feet, social isolation cannot happen again. Vaccines didn't prevent the spread, didn't prevent you from getting it. Requiring vaccines was ridiculous. So you guys need to look into that. I know you guys weren't involved back then, but it may happen again. Two days ago, you and I had a discussion about the election integrity, and I was worried about the past election meeting last year. You somehow went back to 2020. So I got you some stuff about 2020 that just came out recently, which is a, one in five mail-in voters admit they cheated in the 2020 election. Thousand people questioned by Rasmussen, and you need to read this and evaluate this for yourself. This is pretty significant. People voting out of state that admitted to it, people who were signing ballots for other people or had people signing ballots for them. This is very well done. I actually communicated with the people to get me some of the data, so, you know, you need to take a look at this.
What's the source of that information?
This, this is Rasmussen poll, the Rasmussen Organization.
They put out that statement?
Yes.
Okay, I'll look at it.
Rasmussen and another organization as well. So if you Google it, you'll find it. The third thing I gave you is a letter you sent Josh Shapiro advocating for 17% or 17 bucks an hour. Now, I'm going to give you a little economics lesson, okay, because you're used to this situation where if you raise somebody's salary 17 bucks a share or 17 bucks, you just raise taxes, and we have to pay taxes or they take our house, right? But in private business, you raise it 17 bucks, all these small businesses, guess what happens? They either fire people and downsize, they automate, or they go out of business. That's what happens. So you're advocating for something that's going to hurt small businesses in the county. So you need to talk to somebody who actually has a business or who has economic background, because it's pretty simple. Just check out what happened in New York when they tried to all the restaurateur, the servers in, in there. People were losing their jobs right and left, business were going out of business, so that can't happen. I get a real problem with that letter, so, thanks.
So I'm happy to comment on a couple of things. One, the, I think the letter you're referring to is advocating for supporting a raising of the minimum wage in Pennsylvania. I think it's $15. We're the only state that hasn't raised the wage in our, around our borders, and I think the letter was signed by actually all of us and a number of the commissioners, Democratic and Republican, in the collar counties as well as the mayor in Philadelphia. And, you know, I, I think I'm happy to distribute the letter and have folks see it, but we think it's incredibly important to maintain the wages that were set, in fact, now decades ago, and, and to make up for what has not been acted upon by our state, but has been acted upon by virtually every single state. I mean, Ohio, I think West Virginia has a higher minimum wage than Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York, and I saw recently information about where wages went up. A person commented on what happened at a, at a, I think it was at a burger joint, five cents. Five cents was the, was the price raised on some of the items, and just a modest raise in prices, which you didn't account for, right? In terms of businesses don't have to close, and I think consumers are willing to pay for things specifically for, for businesses that are paying their workers appropriately and making sure that people who work 40 hours a week and work full-time jobs are not living in poverty. But that's, that's my background on that. You can speak to why you signed the letter if you have any comments.
Being a small business owner, it was, it was, or was a small business owner, it was, it was an interesting issue to, to look at, and, you know, from my perspective, talking with a lot of businesses in the area, they're already at a certain level of what people are being paid. And what I was looking at was supporting what's already occurring in Montgomery County. I don't believe that it would, should go higher than that, but, you know, it hasn't changed in, in several years. And I remember, you know, some of us are old enough to remember, I hate to say it, but when, you know, when minimum wage went from $3 to $7, and at the time when that move was made, again, a lot of businesses were already paying higher wages, because quite honestly, in Montgomery County, you can't hire people today without looking at, you know, starting salaries, starting hourly wages. And from my perspective, I'm, I'm speaking, and it was a part of it, and I take responsibility, is that I realized that this was going to get so much attention, but I would have had a more comment prepared. But from my perspective, I'm supporting what's already occurring in Montgomery County, and I've, I have several friends that are small business owners, and I've asked them where are they at, whether they're starting salaries, and it was only basically being in alignment with where majority of the county is already at. I don't foresee anything happening in the near future anyway, but supply and demand is going to continue to drive what companies are going to be paying their employees. And in most instances, we're already seeing an increase in pricing related to hamburgers since hamburgers was brought up. We're already seeing large increases in pricing, which is related to inflation that's already been occurring. We've seen high levels of inflation, and a lot of businesses are trying to keep up with those levels, which is, it's just, it's an endless loop. It's, it's, you know, inflation goes up, you have to pay people more because you need them to be able to survive, and then, then your cost of goods goes up, which then causes you, you know, to raise your prices, which then causes people to have to make more money so they can afford that burger. It's just, it's just, it's just a terrible cycle that we're in, and, and hopefully we'll see good things ahead of us, and hopefully we'll also see some of the, some of these high prices increases coming back down or at least normalizing over, over the future.
Okay. I think I'll move on to the next public comment.
Rosemary of Sautterton.
Hi, my name is Rosemary Buticoffer. I live in Sautterton, and I decided to come to this as my first commissioners' meeting, and I'm really enjoying seeing a government at work, really, really am. I came because my local newspaper, The Reporter, had an article after the last commissioners' meeting where there were several people who were speaking about election integrity and election security, and I think that is very important, so I thought I would come here to offer some suggestions from my own personal experience. I have been a volunteer poll worker, and I have volunteered also as a paid worker here in Montgomery County, and it's so illuminating, and I think it would allay a lot of the fears people have and how they think that there will be, you know, mishaps, things miscounted, extra votes coming in. I worked at going through the mail-in ballots, being someone who helped open them, sort them, and run them through the machine, and the seriousness and the security, and I would honestly say the reverence that you see from the paid employees here, voter services, there is nothing happening to those ballots except they are being counted. And I was so, oh, really, really touched by that and really enjoyed that experience. I've also been a paid county worker just for the day in my ward in Sautterton, and again, as people come in to sign that book and you greet them, literally 92-year-old woman that came in said, "I'm voting every election, and I, I never know when it's going to be my last one." And you're so odd and inspired by it, and I, I just really felt that I wanted to come here and tell you that there are so many safeguards in place, there are so many, what to fail safes. Our elections are safe and secure, and I don't have any doubt because I've seen it myself, and I know that voter services can always use more people. So go on the website. I looked this morning, and you can volunteer, you can apply to be a paid worker. Now that I am, I'm an advocate, a greeter outside and a poll worker in that sense, so I'm not paid, so just wanted to say that. And also, my son is 28 years old, and he was invited to the reception today too. He can't come because he's working, but he's voted 20 times, and by 28, they had a category, and they call that a super voter, I think, because like, knowing that I take voting very seriously, my children do too, and so my son's never missed an election. So on his behalf, thank voter services. He can't come to the event, but he was really pleased to get that phone call. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's really nice to hear that. What's his name?
His name's James, James Buticoffer.
Okay, James. We will schedule another one in the fall where we recognize his achievement, and it will not be during the weekday, so that we make sure we get younger people who are working and whatnot. So appreciate it. Thank you so much, and thank you for being a poll worker. Go ahead.
Ty Spence.
So I'm going to start again. So I'm from Pottstown, and I also want you to not forget about Pottstown. We need resources for our small businesses and our schools. And also thank to the commissioner, Chair Commissioner Winder, for allowing Monco to be a community of love and pride. Pride Month, Pride Flag, I thank her for that. And like I said before, this month is National Autism Month, and I'm here as an advocate for adults living fabulously with autism. My niece Ty Spence here, she is, she's 43 years old. She was sexually assaulted in Windmore Hills Nursing Home by a male nurse by the name of Sheldon Lovelace last year. I can't sleep at night. I, I wrote this at 2:30 in the morning. My family had two 18-year-old boys killed by gun violence. I thought that would break our family, but that didn't break our family. We had multiple loved ones that died from COVID-19. Nearly all of the females in the family have died from breast cancer at young ages. We had a death of a baby from brain cancer. I thought that would break my family. That did not break my family. This broke my family. It cut us in half. What happened to Ty? She's such a kind. She's a vulnerable young woman. And in her words, she's a supermodel. She, she has inspirational quotes to give anybody that would ask, and if it doesn't come to mind, she'll Google it. Thank you. She just recently wrote a, a book that we're working on editing, soon to be released. But even with all of that, it, it broke our family. We are scattered, we are in disbelief. We feel guilty for not protecting her, but we weren't in a nursing home, you know? We can't, we can't look at each other anymore. We're hurting. But we want her case to be fully prosecuted. He was arrested. The, the lower court upraised it to the higher court, but the DA that just ran out of here, they're not returning phone calls. Ty's attorney is here, Robert Birch, you can talk to him. They're not returning phone calls. They're not returning my phone calls. They disregard me, and I'm going to keep going because everybody else went over the bell. They are not prosecuting this case to the fullest extent, and I want, like, we don't have no, no hatred or anger for this male, this person, Sheldon Lovelace. We are kind, forgiving people. We don't have no, 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 no hatred, but we just want this case to be prosecuted. We want Ty to say what happened and to tell her story, how she tells her story in her own words, in her own way, right? We want that done, and, uh, thank you.
Next up is Ty Spence.
Hey, I'm Ty Spence. I'm a resident at Pottstown Skilled Nursing and Rehabilitation Facility. I just have just one statement that I'm going to speak up for three minutes. Everyone has the right to freedom, whether it's about situations with living in a nurse home or other problems, including myself. That's it. That's all I got to say.
David Morgan.
David Morgan from Ambler, my sympathies for your family loss and for Commissioner Winer's loss. Maybe in Ambler, our Boilerhouse transformation could be helpful information for what's being imposed for the prison, because that's now a office building site which has, still has a smokestack, it was industrial. And then I want to just mention about my idea, which I was trying to say why about point A1, and that fact that if we could have the website quarterly show expenses... point A1, and that fact that if we could have the website quarterly show expenses that the public taxpayer can see, when we spend our credit cards, we know what we're spending, but when we see a general budget item like for planning commission or for justice center, county campus plan, we can see that quarterly updates and see the spending for the year. This building's had a lot of expenses, and there's three parts that I was reading about in the county campus plan. So if those things could be really just available in a user-friendly way to the public, that we just go see them, that would be great. And then we can talk about them in meetings to save the taxpayers. Recent 13% increase, which we're paying now, we either paid it in March or April, property taxes are up 13%, we can address that and try to look forward to perhaps a tax cut. $30 million caused the raise of the taxes that much, 13%. Then a couple other points, I just was noticing about Pottstown, did have an article about homeless camp volunteers went to help clean it up in The Reporter of April 2nd. So didn't mention any persons who are homeless participating in this. Church was involved, and many officials were. So I'd like to wonder, can we have mental health persons work with homeless to have ways they can maintain their areas, their transit areas, and have also consideration about financial awareness, that if they have some funds, can they best come out of homelessness? Then finally, I don't know if this was mentioned, but Easter holiday came around, and I forgot, I confess, I forgot to say it last meeting, but I know Ramadan was mentioned, and Passover was just mentioned, and how if county commissioners are mentioning holidays, if Easter was mentioned, because it lends a long time. So maybe you did say something, but if you didn't, I understand you're busy. But it's a very meaningful holiday for me. And The Reporter had a very good let Easter influence this beyond today article with quotes in the Bible and the hope we have of Jesus, great suffering for us and conquering death. So just to put that out there, that's very helpful in my life, and hopefully, it'll just give us some light and patience and love for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it was mentioned or not, but I will I will say that we, in recognition of Good Friday, we closed down everything Friday at 12:00 noon. So there was, you know, we knew that the Easter holiday was coming, and it's very important for a lot of people, and that's what that was one of the things that we were able to do.
And by the way, Mr. Morgan, I heard you are quite a violinist. Is that right?
I do play violin.
You can do a lot in three minutes, right?
I could do, if you want a solo.
Just a future request, just something to keep in mind.
Maybe for Mother's Day.
That'd be great. Any others?
Yes, we have Zoom, we have Adrian Seltzer.
Okay. Adrian?
Give me a second to unmute. Thank you. Two things. Hooray on the website, I volunteer to be a beta tester. Also, I am hoping that the company, I wanted this during the agenda items, but the company that you're hiring to do bridge repair is not the same company that took and is taking forever to do the bridge in Lower Marion, because it's been years. And I'd hate to have that be the same experience for people in other parts of the county. And that's it. And thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. And I will invite you soon, can I say the date or not?
Mid-April.
This month.
To the mid-April ribbon cutting of the Mill Creek Bridge, which we've all been waiting for, for a very long time, Bridge Number Six. It's happening. I have no idea if the company is the same. We don't need to answer that immediately, but your point is well taken, and we're very excited for the opening of that bridge.
Last on Zoom is Jenny.
Hi, Jenny Rymen-Schneider, Lower Providence Township. I want to say I'm very grateful for those fighting human trafficking in our community, and I just wanted to mention that I'm happy to see Laurel House represented, because years ago, a friend of mine and her mother and sisters were some of the very first residents there. So I'm very appreciative that they're still in existence. My story's a bit different, but involves someone being abruptly torn from her family and her home, stripped of her civil rights, and used for profit. The glaring and disturbing difference is that for my mother, this was under an arrangement forced upon her by a county agency allegedly tasked with providing assistance to keep older adults in their homes. It's a system fully endorsed by the county and largely funded by county taxpayers. On the surface, it sounds innocuous, even perhaps pleasant and helpful, but to the victims who have experienced this hellish arrangement, it's the worst thing that can happen to them in their fragile last years. It's mistakenly labeled as guardianship. Due to county adult punishment services, my mother was ripped from her life without benefit of a fair trial, such as that afforded to criminals. She was shoved into a subpart facility, where she's been injured, ignored, isolated, depressed, frightened, guilty, soaking in her own urine, exposed to and suffered from COVID, scabies and other viruses and communicable ailments, been deprived of her dignity and privacy, and subject to all the other terrible things that are well-known to occur in nursing homes. She's been deprived of her favorite foods and has access only to the mass-produced, unhealthy items that are easy and inexpensive for the facility, and at times, they designate. She's lost many pounds, as well as her will to live. County residents should know that their taxes contribute to the agencies and individuals who make invalid, exaggerated, and unsubstantiated claims in order to have more taxes pay court personnel and county-paid attorneys to force older adults into these situations. To this day, county taxpayers are funding an absolutely vicious attorney who hasn't set eyes on my mother since November 2021, yet insists on not allowing us to use non-county services to rehome her into a community setting. The commissioners oversee all county agencies and have the power to review this horrifying practice. Once again, I'm begging them to spare me a few minutes to discuss with me how this might be accomplished. I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you.
One more person, Kathy Pagano.
Can you hear me? Yes. Good morning, Commissioners, Kathy Pagano, Lower Gwinnett Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I have been engaged in these meetings virtually, and as a result, I stay informed as a citizen and a voter. I strongly encourage other residents to do the same. I wanted to convey two quick points. I extend my sincere appreciation for Commissioner Winder and to you, Commissioner McKeja, for your steadfast support of the LGBTQ+ community in Monco. Your support aligns with my values, and I voted for you both because of your dedication to representing all county residents. I'm organizing a Pride Flag Raise in Lower Gwinnett, and as the first openly LGBTQ+ elected official in Lower Gwinnett, I invite you both to attend. Commissioner Dubello, while I acknowledge your support for Moms for Liberty, I also welcome you to engage with our LGBTQ+ residents, many of whom have been integral members of our township for over 50 years. Number two, while discussions often revolve around crime in Monco, there is a notable absence regarding traffic violations such as speeding, running red lights, and disregarding stop signs. These things constitute actual issues that affect the residents of the county on a daily basis. Thank you for your attention and for your public service.
Thank you. Please do send me the invitation. Okay, great. All right, so that is public comment for today. We'll move to any closing, well, before any closing comments, I'll just say our upcoming meeting dates. We have a commissioners meeting on Thursday, April 18th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. here. And do you have any closing comments?
Just two quick comments. One is, is that potentially, maybe we could look at a future meeting to have an overview of the county planning department's budget, just a high-level bucket, just to explain, so people understand how that how that works. And then, secondly, there was it was referred to up in Pottstown, there was a large cleanup effort this past weekend in the Tent City, as it's known. They filled, I think there was like 40 to 50 volunteers that were up there. I want to thank them for their efforts. I believe they filled two large 40-yard dumpsters. So there was a lot of a lot of trash that was was pulled out. I've had a lot of meetings, talked to a lot of different groups over the last several months regarding homelessness, including, most recently, I talked with a few chiefs within our Montgomery County Chief of Police is within Montgomery County as well. And one of the things that is a common belief or theme, or what I call in reality, is that, and I've had this conversation with Tamara, who heads up our HHS, that there is no end-to-end plan or solution. We have a lot of great organizations that make up a lot of wonderful people that are doing or working extremely hard for our community, working with, you know, trying to address the homelessness. But this is this is the same thing I've gotten back from numerous directions, is that there is no interconnecting, there is no plan. And I take it from my corporate background, building, you know, large solutions, breaking it down into smaller problems, and everything's interconnected. And, you know, it's basically, we identify people here, we have to bring them through the system. They may be with us for three, four, five years, and there has to be follow-up, there has to be people categorized with based based on what their needs are. Those needs need to be addressed, and then it needs to be interconnected with additional support. You know, I've talked with somebody that's working with the homelessness, and, you know, they've said to me, there's people that that don't even know how to fry an egg. And this is, these are the true problems that we have. Homelessness is growing, it's not going to go away. Like I said, I'm not discounting all the hard work and all the efforts of not only the people within our own county, but all of the organizations that are out there working. But we need to figure out how we're going to devise an overall strategy framework and and plan to address the homelessness in Montgomery County. There are other states that have done similar things, and there's a lot of information out there that we could learn from, but the only way we're going to solve the problem is if we actually have this framework in place. And that ends my comments.
Thank you. Couple things, I would just add, you know, this is a priority for all three of us. We're gonna have a summit and speak to a number of municipalities about the steps that they're taking, both on temporary shelter space, but affordable housing, and really addressing the entire continuum of housing needs in the county. So expect more updates on that in future meetings after our summit as well. Tonight, we're doing a poll worker training, and I'm excited to meet folks like you who are really stepping up and serving as the backbone of our democracy, and really with incredible integrity and reverence, as you said, you know, upholding the system and creating a process that people can trust. So I'm honored to do that, and there's a number of events in Lower Marion. There was unfortunately, an incident of a swastika graffitied on Temple Beth Hillel, Beth L., and a number of community members are coming together to speak about, speaking out against hate. So, you know, it's important for us to recognize that when anything happens to one community, it affects every community, and we all have to stand up to speak out against incidents like this. So with that, I think we'll move to Salary Board in just a moment after we adjourn. I think that's that's it, right? Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the April 4th, 2024, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
No board, any board comment? No board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, and we'll see you next on Thursday, the 18th. We'll have a brief Salary Board meeting right now. Calling to order the meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there any public comment?
No comments.
Okay, so I'll ask Catherine Halen to join us to present the Salary Board list.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated April 3rd, 2024, with the timestamp of 9:00 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
Okay, motion to approve the April 4th, 2024, Salary Board presentation as given by Ms. Catherine. Halen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Controller Sanchez. Any board comment? Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, Salary Board list is approved. I'll make a motion to adjourn the April 4th, 2024, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dubello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we adjourn.